YouTube is telling me we're live.
I'm just watching it on a separate screen. I want to make sure.
Good idea.
We're live.
All right. Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to call the meeting to order. This, this is the Cumberland County Main Commissioners Meeting for Monday, April 13th. It's now approximately 5:30 PM. We'll, we'll start the meeting, so I'll call, I'll call that order. Members of the public who can watch us on our live video stream at CumberlandCounty.org/live. And if you want to participate, participate in the meeting, you can send us comments, questions, or statements by email to Kennedy@CumberlandCounty.org. That's Kennedy, K-E-N-N-E-D-Y, at CumberlandCounty.org. And at some point, we'll stop for comments from the public and somebody will read those, read those out, and we will make whatever response is appropriate at the time. So feel free to, feel free to join that way. Okay, first off, Barb, could I just ask you to essentially call, call roll and get, make sure we make a record of who all is here?
Absolutely. Commission Chair Tom Thomas-Coward.
I'm here.
Commission Vice Chair Stephen Gordon.
Here.
Mr. Neil Jameson.
Here.
Mr. James Cludier. Commissioner Susan Wittonis.
Here.
And did you want me to do the county staff or no?
I think we can see who the county staff are, and I think that's fine. Certainly, certainly make a note and put it in the minutes. Okay, first I would look, I would entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of March 9 and April 1, 2020.
So.
I hear a motion. Cludier and second by Susan Wittonis. And I think we need to do this by roll call, so Barbara, if you could call the roll. How on that? Is there any, first off, is there any discussion about the, about the minutes? Seeing none, I would be able to call the roll, please.
Okay, Thomas Coward, Chair.
Aye.
Steve Gordon, Vice Chair.
Yes.
Neil Jameson, Commissioner.
Yes.
James Cludier, Commissioner.
Yes.
Okay, that is, that is unanimous. Thank you very much. And I, Jim Cludier or Jim Gailey, do we have any informational reports or presentations at this time?
Not this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is comments from the public. Mr. Mr. Kennedy, do we have any comments from the public at this point?
We've not received any to date since the meeting agenda was posted on Friday, no.
Okay, and if you, if anything pops up like that, just let me know, but so we'll close the, the public comment part of this agenda. Next is the consent agenda. I would, got a couple of items on there. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
I get Cludier moving and Steve Gordon seconding. Barb, could you call the, are there any discussions about that, or anybody want to pull either of these items off? Hearing nothing, Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Commission Chair Thomas Coward.
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Stephen Gordon.
Yes.
Commissioner Neil Jameson.
Yes.
Commissioner James Cludier.
Yes.
Commissioner Susan Wittonis.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next is the acceptance of, it's item number 20-032, Acceptance of the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan and Allocation of Home Funding First Reading. Who would like to talk to us about that?
Guess who? This is Kristen, Kristen Stiles, Community Development Director. I'm here to present our Community Development Block Grant, which is part of our 2020 Annual Action Plan that we'll be submitting to HUD. This is, we're required to have two public hearings about this, and any public comment about these, about the Annual Action Plan can be submitted to Kristen Stiles at Stiles, S-T-Y-L-E-S, at CumberlandCounty.org. Stiles, S-T-Y-L-E-S, at CumberlandCounty.org, and I will make sure that your comments are submitted into the record that we will turn into HUD. I'm here to talk about that. I'm also here to present to you our home funds, which will be part of the City of Portland's Annual Action Plan as part of our home consortium with them. And I'm also here to give you a quick update about the CARES Act funds as it relates to CDBG. So for our Community Development Block Grant Funds for 2020, we are receiving, as you, as you have in your packet and is available on the county's website, we will be receiving $1,564,196. Of that, 244 will be going towards administration. That's not just administration at the county. That's administration for South Portland and Bridgeton, which have their set aside programs as well. There's a slight bump up in that of $8,000 from last year. That bump is to help us cover some upcoming expenses that we're going to have in doing our next five-year consolidated plan, which will be due in May 2021. And that bump up, we're anticipating that we're going to have to do a housing assessment for the entire county. We're hoping to get everyone that has to do this housing assessment, so the housing authorities, City of Portland, all together to chip in, so that we only put out one R, one RFP that will cover the entire county when we do that. Then we have $822,671 that will be going to county and regional programs. We have $160,000 that will be going to Bridgeton programs, and 389,603 that will be going to South Portland programs. Our application was released in October. We had a workshop in November 14th about it. Our pre-applications were due in December, and the final applications were due in January. Our program is remade very, fairly similar to the same way that it's been run for the past five years, given that we're in the fifth year of our Annual Action Plan. The point system for the applications has stayed the same. Our general application and public service application have one set of points, and then our planning application has a different set of points. This year, we received 15 grants for the county program, or we're actually, excuse me, we're funding 15 grants for the county program. Of that, we have 166,000 that will be going to regional programs, and we have 656,000 that will be going to community-based programs. Of those community-based programs, one of them is covering multiple communities, and that one is the Through These Doors Abuse and Later Life Program. We funded it last year as a pilot program, and it's been very successful, so it received funding, funding again this year. They use our funding as a, as a match. We were, we're going to be funding 135,000 in public service, 517,000 in public infrastructure and public facilities programs, and 104,000 in housing. One housing program that I'm really excited about this year is Habitat for Humanity. Realize that we no longer have a housing rehab program here in Cumberland County, and they stepped up in the fall and created one. So far, the program has been extremely successful, and with our CDBG funds, they'll be able to expand it to help more families here across Cumberland County. We're also funding two planning grants for a total of 29,000, and then we have our Cumberland County Administration at 154,000. In the packet you received, I won't spend the time going through each of the, each of the programs with you. A lot of these programs we have funded in the past because they've been very successful, and without our CDBG funding, the program just wouldn't happen. So the MOC and the review team that reviews the CDBG applications felt the need to keep those programs running. Some of them received a slight deduction in how much we had funded them in the past, kind of as an incentive for them to go off and find other funding sources and not continually use CDBG year after year. For public infrastructure projects, we're doing public infrastructure projects in Harpswell, Gorham, Yarmouth, and Gray and Westbrook. The town of Gray is actually receiving three grants this year. They haven't received CDBG funding in quite a few years. And with the new AMI maps that we received last year showing low and moderate income areas, they're qualifying zone. So we kind of reached out to them to make sure that they're aware that the CDBG funds are available and that they, that they can do some good projects in their town, and they took advantage of that, which we're happy about. The town of Bridgeton had a bit of turnover this past year, so they're behind their normal schedule, but they did vote this past week and approve their CDBG budget. So I'll be able to include that in your packet for you next year. They're funding one public infrastructure project, and then the rest are social service projects that they have funded in past years that have helped the town and been extremely successful there. The city of South Portland, their set aside is 444,000, and they're doing quite a few big projects. The largest one being a Westbrook redevelopment project, which is actually meeting up with funding that they had received from us in the past. One of the main reasons that we want this project done is so that the entire Westbrook Street neighborhood is kind of coming together because we are putting a lot of funding into the two affordable housing projects by Avesta that are happening down there. Both have been, received light tech credits and are moving forward. They've already broken ground on one of them, and the second one is scheduled to break ground next year. So we're really happy about the amount of work that they're doing there, and it's going to really transform the entire neighborhood there. They've done a nice design. For our home consortium, starting last year in 2019, we decided to get rid of the housing rehab program using the home funds due to a bunch of complications with it, mainly being that you can't just go in and fix one thing. It has to be a full house assessment, which then puts it outside of our, our budget range to be able to actually fix the homes. So the funds weren't being used to the best of their ability. Now, again, this year, we'll be putting all of the funds into affordable housing, and we will have our set aside from the City of Portland's consortium is 432,611. And in that, it's kind of divided into two categories. The smaller category being a CHODO, which is a community housing development organization, has to receive a portion of it through HUD. That portion is 667,935. Usually, the people that apply for us, such as Avesta or Westbrook Housing, both qualify for a CHODO, so it doesn't, it doesn't impact us as much as it does other areas. Does anyone have any questions for me on the annual, our 2020 Annual Action Plan? The home funds or the CDBG funds before I move on to the CARES Act?
Any questions?
Yes, Kristen, this is Neil. How many actual grant applications were filed? You awarded 15, but.
I think there were 19 this year.
Okay. And so the committee thought it was a balanced award. Were any particular reason why the other four, those four were not considered, were they incomplete or just the 15 awarded were better projects?
I, I want to make sure I'm telling you the right number. Give me just a second. Yeah, so it was 19 projects. The, the ones that didn't get funded, the majority of them were in the public service category, and the reason that they weren't able to get funded is because we're capped at 15% of using our funds for public service. I think Travis can attest to this, that we had a really, really, really good set of applications this year. There were no applications that were turned in that, that, that didn't, that weren't thoughtfully put together. And while it would have been wonderful if we could fund all of them, all of them were completely deserving, we wanted to make sure that no project was getting only partial funding and then not being able to complete what they had hoped to complete. So we had the committee score the applications and started funding the high-scoring applications and kind of went down until the funding ran out. One program that scored fairly high just didn't receive enough of the funding based on where they landed to actually do much with it. So they were willing to kind of step aside and maybe try and come back next year or another year when they could potentially get all of the funding they needed, which then dropped it, dropped it down. I believe that there should be a recommendation score sheet, or there is a recommendation score sheet that I can send you that shows all of the projects and what the scores were and how much each person, how much they requested and how much they received.
That, that would be, that would be very nice information to have, I think, for all of us. I think that would be very useful.
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll meal it out tonight.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Tom.
Yeah, Steve Gordon.
Can we get her to give a brief understanding of what the Community Block Development Grant is and who participates in making the selection? I don't think the public knows that, that all of the community.
That's a really good point.
Are you willing to speak to that?
Yes, happily. So Cumberland County was able to do what qualified as an urban county by having enough people living in our county, even without the City of Portland included in that, that we now get entitlement funds from HUD. And these entitlement funds are under the block grant of Community Development Block Grant, and these funds are specifically to help low and moderate income individuals. So we can help low and moderate income individuals in a bunch of different ways. We can help them directly through, you know, food programs or job training assistance programs or things that are going directly to an individual. We can also help them on a larger scale, which is what a lot of CDBG funds are used for by helping on a community-wide basis. So in a lower moderate income area, we can install a playground, we can improve sewer pipes, water pipes, sidewalks. We do a lot of crosswalk and pedestrian safety because low and moderate income individuals tend to have a higher rate of using public transportation and needing to walk places. So we want to make sure that everybody is kept safe, but we're really focusing on that group of low and moderate income individuals. For our consortium here in Cumberland County, we have, there's 27 communities, but 25 of them participate in what we have. And those 25 communities, each one of those communities has one representative on our municipal oversight committee, and our municipal oversight committee is the one that is made aware of, made aware of the applications. They're the only ones that are allowed to apply for the applications are these individual towns. And of the municipal oversight committee, instead of having 25 people trying to look at an application, each year in the fall, they select a small group. This year, we had actually quite a large group. We had 10 of us, or 10 individuals, me not included, that read all of the applications and scored all of those applications. We also make sure that we have somebody from Bridgeton and South Portland, even though they have their own set aside of the funds. And we also include GP COG in this just because they have an overview and don't really have a stake in the game because they're, they're not applying for any of the funds.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments about this item? Jim, do we need an action on this to approve it, or is this just the first hearing?
Well, I would, I would do an action to approve first hearing and set May 11th as second hearing of final action.
I have a motion to that effect, please. I see Jim Cludier's hand up.
Second.
And second by, by Neil Jameson. Barb, could you, could you take the roll, please, on that?
Yes. Commission Chair Thomas Coward.
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Stephen Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Neil Jameson.
Yes.
Commissioner James Cludier.
Yes.
Commissioner Susan Wittonis.
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Kristen. Thank you so much for this. I always enjoy your presentations.
Thank you.
And it's, I, and I, I think your presentation about what the background for this is, is also very good. This is a, this is something that benefits people all across the, all across the county, and we have a lot of, we have a very unusual setup here because of South Portland and Bridgeton kind of clubbing together with us to, to make this work. So I, I'm very pleased with this program. I'm very, very happy that you're, how this has been handled. This is a good thing for me doing. So thanks.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, could I, I, I thought, I understood that we were going to get a little update on some CARES funds as well, but I hope I didn't miss it.
Oh, oh, sorry. Have I, Kristen, or I cut you off?
No, 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 no. I, the, the CARES Act is, is not part of what you, you all will be voting on. The CARES Act has given extra funds for CDBG. They've given $5 billion nationwide. That $5 billion has been split into kind of three waves. The first wave of funding is based on the same formula allocation that we use when we're getting our regular CDBG funding. This CARES Act CDBG funding is now going to be called CDBGCV. And from that first wave, which is $2 billion, Cumberland County is going to be receiving 920,165. From that, the second wave, which is another $2 billion, that's going to be going to the state, and then the state is going to be allocating that to us entitlements as well as non-entitlement areas. And the state has 30 days from the time that the CARES Act was enacted to tell us how much we're going to be getting. So, so far, I have no idea, and I have no way of guessing because it's not based on a formula that we have ever used in the past. And then in the third wave is another billion nationwide that's going to be done based on a formula that HUD has created of the areas most impacted by coronavirus. So I'm guessing that New York, this is just my guess, is going to be getting a big chunk of that. But that doesn't mean that Cumberland County won't see any of that $1 billion. I just have, I have no way of guessing how much we're going to be getting. Some other unknowns here, which our HUD rep has no idea when we're going to find this information out either, is can we start using that first wave before we find out what the others are? Do we need to keep them all together? Do, are they going to be part of their own action plan? Or are they going to be amendment to our 2019 action plan? It's either going to be one of those two. It's not part of the 2020 action plan, which you all will be voting on at the May meeting. That information we have been made aware of. Another, the two other really important pieces to note on this are they've made a whole bunch of waivers for us to make the funds a little bit easier and faster to get out. One of those waivers is usually we have a 30-day public comment period, and they're shortening that down to five days as long as we have a good way of letting the public know about it so that we can get those funds out faster when we're running our programs. The other thing is they've waived that 15% public services cap, which is really helpful in this situation because rental assistance, food assistance, a lot, not necessarily small business loans, but a lot of other things that we really need to do to help the COVID-19 situation here in Portland all fall under that public service, that public, public service group. So we need to, I'm really happy that, that, that they waived that for us. As soon as I have more information about when we can use these funds or what the stipulations are around using these funds, I will make sure to update you. My best guess is at some time in May. We will have our numbers. HUD will give us some guidance, and what we're trying to do right now is get everything in line and everything prepped. So the minute those funds hit our bank, we can be up and rolling as fast as we can to get the money out.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, good. Looks like there's money in the pipeline, possibly. So that's very good. And I would note for anybody in the, watching us on YouTube, if you look on our website, you'll find the meetings, the notes for the meetings, the agenda items for this meeting, there is a notice of public hearings in there for this, for this community, Community Development Block Grant process. So there's some, some notes there about the meeting for today and then the, the one on May 11th. And also, anyone needing interpretation services, apparently Kristen speaks about 15 languages because she's the, she's the contact for all of those. So I thought that was, I, I'm thrilled that we have such a talented person on our staff. Any further questions or comments about this item? Okay, I thank you very much, Kristen. Thank you, and your toddlers probably need you anytime now, so.
Thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Okay. Excuse me. All right, next item on the agenda is 20-033 Proclamation for National Telecommunicators Week, April 12 through 18. And just for the record, Barbara, could you actually read that proclamation so people will know what it's about?
Yes. Okay, "Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. Whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Cumberland County Regional Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link to our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the County of Cumberland have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each CCRC staff member has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, be it resolved that the County Commissioners of the County of Cumberland declare the week of April 12 through 18, 2020, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the county in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe."
Thank you very much. Discussion, motion by Steve Gordon. Second by Jim Cludier. Any discussion about this or questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Barb, could you read the roll, please?
Commission Chair Thomas Coward.
Coward, yes, that's me. Yes, yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Stephen Gordon.
Yes.
Commissioner Neil Jameson.
Yes.
Commissioner James Cludier.
Yes.
And Commissioner Susan Wittonis.
Yes.
Okay, that sounds like that's unanimous. Thank you very much. And Jim, you're going to have to make some arrangements to get our signatures on this thing.
Talk about that in a couple of minutes.
Okay, let me, let me know. And I'm, I'm happy to set it up on DocuSign if you want, so. But give me a minute because I can't, I can't eat and chew gum at the same time, so. Okay. Next item is number 20-034 Proclamation for National Corrections Officer, Officer Week. And Barb, could I ask you to read that proclamation, please?
Yes. "Whereas correctional officers are trained law enforcement professionals dedicated to maintaining safe correctional facilities and ensuring the public's safety." And whereas correctional facilities across the United States are run by highly qualified and experienced individuals with a deep understanding of the challenges within the profession. And whereas correctional officers and employees are responsible for the custody, care, and rehabilitation of thousands of offenders every year, as well as the maintenance of safe and secure facilities. And whereas correctional officers and employees are resourceful, capable, committed, patient, and persistent professionals in criminal justice. And whereas correctional officers and employees serve admirably in many different capacities, including bail administrators, chaplains, nurses, supervisors, social workers, teachers, managers, and directors. And whereas correctional officers and employees mentor, counsel, and treat offenders. And whereas correctional officers and employees provide offenders with direction while assisting with re-entry and life outside corrections. And whereas correctional officers and employees rise to meet any challenge and serve this honorable profession nobly and admirably. And now therefore be it resolved, the county commissioners of the County of Cumberland declare the week of May 3 through the 9, 2020, to be National Correction Officers Week in the county in honor of the men and women who deserve recognition for their service and the exceptional performance of their duties under difficult circumstances.
Thank you very much. Discussion or motion on this item, please?
Move both of us.
I have a motion from Jim Cludier and a second by Mr. Jamison. Commissioner Jamison, any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Barb, could you take the roll, please?
Thomas Coward, Chair.
Yes.
Steve Gordon, Vice Chair.
Yes.
Neil Jamison, Commissioner.
Yes.
Mr. James Cludier.
Yes.
Commissioner Susan Wittonis.
Yes.
Thank you very much. That appears to be a unanimous vote, and we'll get that signed and communicated as quickly as we can, as quickly as we can. Next is item number 20-02, sorry, 20-035 Authorizing the Candidate County Manager to contribute funds from the county's regional aid fund to food pantries around Cumberland County. Jim Gailey, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. This idea came from Commissioner Wittonis, who about a week, week and a half ago asked me to explore the number of food pantries that we have operating in Cumberland County. It was on the belief, and I've seen it on the news, that food is a commodity these days, or high commodity. And these food pantries throughout our communities in the county are getting hit extra hard because of the situation that many families find themselves in currently. Doesn't matter whether you're in the big city or a small town within the county, the local food pantry is overwhelmed by the, the need that is there. With said, Commissioner Wittonis, and I thought that it would be prudent to do some research, see what we have out there for food pantries, and bring forth a recommendation, or at least an idea, to the commissioners for action this evening. It depends, food pantries are funny in that there are some well-established regional food pantries. And there are also some food pantries that are just in the closet of a local Methodist church that is open once a month. So they really run the gamut. And I looked at two of the leading resources that we have in the region on trying to get an exact number. And the first was Good Shepherd Food Bank and the partnerships that they have with food pantries throughout Cumberland County. And I came up with about a, a number around 2021 across the county. Second resource I used was Wayside Food Pantry, in which I came up with a different number of partners under the Wayside, and that came up with 16. So you can see there's a little bit of difference, and I think the, the middle ground is a lot of those smaller food pantries that may be open only for three hours on a, on a Tuesday afternoon once a month. And so some threshold that we have to determine on if the commissioners are willing to, to move this forward and provide some funding to these food pantries. At this point, I pause and just allow commissioners to ask any questions. Staff is bringing forth a recommendation of $400. That would allow for the commissioners to the contribution, if you wished, maybe in May, to these food pantries. Just to get an idea. We went off from 16 food pantries. At $300, it would be $4,800 total. $400, it would be $6,400, and $500 would be $8,000. So that's what it's based off of if we go 16 pantries. Of course, if we, if you wish to go to some smaller pantries that are open less often, that number would change. One other idea that we had, and I've been in conversations with Kristen about, Kristen Staut, who just jumped off, was some of this money coming from the CARE Act. That money we could use towards providing some larger donations to make some of the larger food pantries that we have in the region. There, there are probably anywhere from five to seven food pantries that kind of separate themselves from the others on the regional need. Well-established and open more regularly on a weekly basis. But that's for a discussion down the road. This evening, I'd just like to have a, a general discussion around the item being brought forth, and that is make a monetary contribution to these food pantries out of the regional aid fund that the commissioners established back in December of 2019. Thank you.
I'll throw the floor open to commissioners who wish us to comment. Mr. Cludier.
I generally favor this. The, and I, you know, limiting it initially to the 16 that have been identified as more active makes some sense to me. It seems like we might, in the course of this, gather enough information about what, everything is, that is going on in the, in the county in this to, to maybe have some better ideas of where we could be the most helpful once, you know, if, if CARES Act money becomes available, or if, if we think that CDBG money in the future would be worthwhile for this purpose. I, I don't know, frankly, whether $400 or $500 or $300 would be particularly helpful for these outfits. I know Good Shepherd is huge, and Wayside is smaller, but delivers a lot of food. How that interfaces with, you know, there, there used to be, probably still is, a food pantry in the basement in South Portland of a church that my, my parents always went to, and my mother was there many, many years into her retirement, showing up every Wednesday morning and putting stuff in a bag and passing it out. So that, you know, and how that ever interfaced with any of the larger operations is, is not something I'm really familiar with and like to find out about. I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion that we allocate $500 to the 16 identified food pantries, if that seems to be a reasonable tenor, given whatever other discussion we have there about this.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Christian Cludier. Anyone else? Steve Gordon.
Jim, does, do I hear some criteria here that we're thinking about for making an award, like they, they're open weekly, or they're open bi-monthly, or have you got some criteria like that?
Yes, there is a printout that I have that is pretty lengthy, and it does talk about when they're open. So, you know, if we were to look at regional or criteria for funding, I would, I would focus on regional need. There are a lot of food pantries that service just more than the food that they decide in. I would also focus on the availability of their services to the public. Those pantries that are open two or three hours a month, I don't think rise to the level of the criteria that would warrant a contribution by the commissioners. I think we want to get the money out to those who are making a weekly commitment to purchasing food and distributing food to the residents.
Okay.
Can I wait? Okay, no, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Sue.
Oh, well, Jim, I really, that wasn't my intent to, you know, to have a criteria, you know, with that strict, because in that case, you could really would take care of some of the smaller or communities that still have the need and that still will service with the people and the food. Well, but because they only do it on a monthly basis, then would that would mean that they wouldn't, you know, get the allocation of the extra money. And I think, you know, that they need it with just as much as anybody. So the criteria of only being open, you know, but once a month, I couldn't support that. Because that means that probably two or three of the areas up in my area would not get with the money well because of the way they open. And I would like to see, you know, with the, with the criteria, you know, would be a little bit more relaxed. So we're helping out, you know, is everybody in this time of need, you know, and then if we do, with the bigger hub, you know, one, you know, coming down the road, I will maybe, you know, then we could have, you know, some different kind of more criterias, but you know, that wasn't my intent when I was looking at this to, you know, have some real strict, you know, criterias in this time.
Understood. Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, Jim, Commissioner Cludier.
I understand the point that Commissioner Wittonis just made. Seems to me like we, at some point, and this is, I guess, part of what I was thinking, talking about this, we can gather some, some information now about, you know, what, what is the, kind of the throughput or the effective delivery of, and what is the allocation and need? I think, I remember from my Portland City Council days that the average income in the county per capita, the lowest was sometimes Portland and sometimes Bridgeston. So I, I think the, what Commissioner Wittonis calls her area, it seems to me like there is likely some pretty substantial need in those areas, even though the population is sparse. My, my impression is that maybe for those that are only open once a month, we, we probably ought to make a, a grant of some kind to them. Maybe it's not the full amount that we're talking about for people that are open a couple of times a week, but because we don't know what the volume of, of food that's being delivered is and the, and the nature of the need. But, but I'm sure it's variable across the county. You know, so I, so I'm going to make a motion that that we allocate $400 to the 16 pantries identified by the, by the manager and the, in addition, there as to five additional that were identified through the listing by Good Shepherd that we allocate $300.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I have a second.
Commissioner Jamison, seconds. Discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I would support Sue's position as well. I think every, and Jim's amended motion, I guess, every food bank and pantry should receive some funding. The need is, you know, normally it's a 25% food insecurity across the state and in our county. It's even more exacerbated by the current crisis. I heard a stat last week that the Good Shepherd Food Bank usually purchases, well, they purchased a million dollars worth of food in a month. That was three quarters of their 2019 budget of food purchasing. So the demand has gone through the roof. They need is there. If we can reach out even in the smaller communities, and I've got a couple of those as well, I, I think it would be helpful. I would support the amounts that Jim said.
Other, other discussion?
Well, Tom, yeah, I
Go ahead.
To add to that, we've got to remember that we've got different communities, too. We've got the Muslim community that, that they don't use, they don't eat meat. So you have to supply a lot of eggs and protein that way. This, this proposal that's being made, I think, is, is well-founded and well-needed and will be used by many of them. I like the idea of the regional service. I understand certainly because with the communities, I've got the issue of, of a food bank, maybe or a food service only being open once a month. That's, that's pretty hard on both the food bank and the people of their clients that, that, that use it, but well-needed.
Yeah. Thank you. I, I recall back years ago that when we were doing our public, public, our, our grants portion of our budget, that we, we got requests from really small places. I remember a food pantry on Peaks Island that was looking for something on the order of $100 grant or something like that. I remember, I remember seeing that. So I mean, it, it's out there. There's no community that, you know, where everybody is, you know, where, where everybody is above the, the margin of food insecurity. So I, Sue, I really, I really appreciate you for bringing this forward. I think this is a wonderful opportunity. I look at this, too. I mean, I think we certainly, certainly at, you know, two or three or $400 a pop, for small, you know, for Good Shepherd, that's not going to help them in the least. For some of the smaller places that, you know, that may have a, you know, may certainly have a smaller, smaller throughput on, on services. That could be a, that could be a significant, a significant slice. So I think that's, I'm supporting the motion. I think that's fine. I also would point out that it looks like this is going to be kind of a two-stage or multi-stage process as we get funds in from elsewhere. And some of our, you know, if we get the volume of dollars that have, that we've been discussing sometime in the future, we could direct a significant amount of money to the Good Shepherds or the, you know, whatever, whatever, the, the, the bigger food banks. It would make a real difference to them. So I think, I think now this gives us an opportunity to kind of get an idea, our staff can get an idea of who's out there and establish some relationships with some folks. Because once again, this is something that, this is something that, that I think county, county government, this is an emergency, so county government being involved in it now makes, makes all kinds of sense. But it also may be something that we, you know, that we kind of keep an eye on. It would be useful if we had developed the expertise across the county about where, where these, where these organizations are, and, you know, maybe we can, maybe we can support them, you know, support them a little more regularly, because this is not a problem that just popped up in the last month. This is something that's been out there, and we just haven't been paying attention to it. So I, I'm fully in support of this. Are there any other questions or comments about this, about this motion? Hearing none, Barb, can you call the roll, please?
Yes. Commission Chair Thomas Coward.
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Stephen Gordon.
Yes.
Commissioner Neil Jamison.
Yes.
Mr. James Cludier.
Yes.
Mr. Susan Wittonis.
Yes.
Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. And Jim, Jim Gailey, be sure to keep us posted on what happens on this, because I'd be interested to, interested to see where we go.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay, next is a new late addition to our agenda. It's item 20-036 Resolution Seeking Federal It's item 20-036, Resolution Seeking Federal Financial Assistance for Cross Insurance Arena. That came across my email this afternoon, so I hope everybody, everybody got that. But there is a draft resolution. And Jim Gailey, I'll, I'll turn the floor over to you to, for, for discussion.
Okay, great. I was contacted time today by the city manager in Augusta. As you all know, Augusta has the Augusta Civic Center. He contacted myself and Kathy, who is the city manager up in Bangor, who also has a civic center, to talk about his desire to team up and pass a resolve with the elected bodies to bring to the attention that the SBA loans out there today do not allow for any government body to submit for aid relative loss of business associated with a arena or civic center type building. As we all know that impacts of not having the civic center or a civic center, in our case, the cross insurance arena and is detrimental not only to the bottom line for our county budget, but more importantly to the staff people that we hire on a part-time basis that in a sense runs the show when we have a hockey game or a different type of event in the building. And those staff people are out of work right now because we lost upwards of 13 events from the middle of March to the end of June. And so that's, that hurts. And so what we're looking to do is run a very similar language across Bangor City Council, the Augusta City Council and Cumberland County Commissioners to seek support of the managers in those three districts to submit this to our delegation down in Washington. If you'd like, I could, for public, for the public, Mr. Chairman, I could read the resolution so that everyone understands what it says.
Yes, if you, if you would do that, please.
Okay. Whereas the County of Cumberland owns and contracts the management of the cross insurance arena as a county enterprise fund. And whereas the annual operations of the cross insurance arena millions of dollars of economic activity pumped into the Southern Maine economy. And whereas the cross insurance arena is a significant employer in the Southern Maine region. And whereas the cross insurance arena, for the first time in over 10 years, was trending to break even this fiscal year, having 13 events plus three Mariners games and multiple, possible multiple playoff games from March 16th to the end of June 2020. And with any operating deficits of the cross insurance arena ultimately accrue as a liability for the County of Cumberland's general fund, creating a potentially significant burden on the taxpayers of Cumberland County. And whereas due to the COVID-19 pandemic, business activity at the cross insurance arena has effectively ceased for the foreseeable future, subjecting the County of Cumberland to a large and unavoidable financial impact. And whereas the cross insurance arena is now being established as an alternative care site by the Maine CDC, Maine Emergency Management and the two regional hospitals in Portland. And whereas the cross insurance arena does not currently qualify for federal small business emergency assistance due to its status as a subsidiary operation of county government. And now therefore be resolved that the commissioners of the County of Cumberland do hereby petition the four members of Maine's congressional delegation, Senators Collins and King and Representatives Golden and Pingree, all their power to help alleviate this financial emergency through whatever influence their respective positions might provide. Be it further resolved that the county commissioners do hereby acknowledge and appreciate all the ongoing efforts of the members of the Maine congressional delegation, especially during uniquely challenging time for our state and nation. So that is what I hope you would all support this evening. I think the copy that you have in front of you has only the chairman to sign it. That will have all the signatures blocks on it later this evening because I'm going to have to send a number of documents out for signatures by the commissioners. So might as well do it all at once and get everything, just multiple documents. So with that, I'll answer any questions that the commissioners may have. Thank you.
Yes, questions for the, questions for the county manager? Yes, Commissioner Jameson?
I don't have a question. I would just move that we adopt the resolution as drafted by Manager Gailey.
Second. Have a second from Commissioner Gordon. Any further discussion on this? I, I have to say, Jim, my, my only, my only, my kind of heart dropped a little bit when I realized that this is the first year we might have broken even. And so suddenly, we've got a really deep hole we're going to have to dig out of over the next few years. So, but I, you know, my only consolation is that we are far from alone in the, in the state and the country for this. So, and, and once again, thank you very much for doing this. I, I, my feeling is this can't hurt. And maybe it'll, maybe it'll put a bug in the ear of some of our members of Congress to, you know, sharpen their pencil, sharpen their pencils a little bit and, and to mix my metaphors, cast their nets a little wider for money to get it, you know, to get vital parts of the, of the society through the, through the panic that we're in right now. So thank you so much for bringing this up. And I, I hope everybody, I hope the other two governmental agencies will support this. And oh, by the, do you know if the Augusta Civic Center is being tapped for emergency, for medical, you know, medical emergency situation like we in Bangor are?
Uh, no, only Bangor and Portland at this point.
Okay. And, okay, that's fine. I won't go further into that. Any, any further comments or questions about this? Seeing none, Barb, if you could take the roll on this, that would be great.
Yes. Thomas Coward Chair?
Yes.
Steve Gordon Vice Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Neil Jameson?
Yes.
Commissioner James Cloutier?
Yes.
And Commissioner Susan Wittonis?
Yes.
That is unanimous. Jim, we'll wait to see the finished documents that we can sign. And thank you, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Next is, next is, first off, Mr. Kennedy, have we had any other comments on the, from the YouTube stream or anything? Just in case there's anybody out there.
No.
I suspect not. I've logged into that. I think I'm probably the only person.
I'm there with you.
You and I are the only person.
One mystery person. Says there are three.
All right, there's somebody else. But, okay, comments from the county manager, Mr. Gailey.
Thank you. A few things. One I want to talk about and just put a date on everyone's calendar. Wednesday, April 22nd. We'll be sending out a Zoom video platform, very similar to what we're doing right now. That is nine o'clock in the morning, the trustees over at the cross insurance arena will be meeting up to hear the budget presentation of the general manager. And so I typically like to invite the commissioners to hear that. So you're brought in right from the beginning of the budget discussion. So that'll be nine o'clock on the 22nd. We are going, staying with the cross insurance arena. We are going through a, a conversion process in working with the Maine D, Maine CDC and Maine Emergency Management Agency relative to the conversion of the cross insurance arena into an alternative care facility. That is an ongoing process. Over the weekend, I had a conference call with the lead attorney and a medical center on working through a contract that would be in place between the county and the two hospitals. Today, we met up with Maine Medical Center Facilities Department as well as a construction company and a Portland area architect to button up the final design of what the alternative care site would look like. We're hoping that our conversation tomorrow with the entire group will lead to a number of answers to the questions that have been lingering for the last week and be beginning to move forward progress after tomorrow afternoon on establishing some form of facility at the cross insurance arena. More on that later. But one thing I do want to remind the commissioners, we have more of an active role in this process as it originally brought, was brought to us by the Maine CDC. They found that the funding source that they were looking to use in opening up the cross insurance arena, they were unable to use. So they needed to shift gears and they, they found themselves heading towards FEMA funds. While the state cannot draw down FEMA funds for their own activities, only local governments and county governments can. So the Maine CDC quickly, this, for lack of a better word, told us that we were to run the facility now. And so we have a little bit more heavier lift than what we originally thought we were going to. But all is good. It takes the village to, to do the work, especially during a pandemic. So we're, we're very happy to jump on board and help out where we can.
Jim, can I interrupt? I've read the comments that one of our other commissioners made and it really concerned me. So you're talking about the contract that you're working through. And I hope it is rather specific and tight as to how and when we get paid.
Well, it's, it's interesting when, when you talk about FEMA funds. I kind of revert back to a prior project or a prior disaster declaration about eight years ago that I think in my previous job, I waited upwards of a year for those funds to funnel through to the city that I was working for. So when you're talking FEMA funds, there's really not a lot of quick movement in funds. However, we have learned that FEMA is willing to upfront some funds to cover initial costs. But we are under further dialogue around what those upfront funds look like and how fast on the backend are we going to get these funds? Because my worry is that we don't have a whole a significant amount of money in the till to cover all the costs associated with this if this facility is up and running as, as some think it's going to be. With that, we need to offset some of our costs because we just won't have the money to cover every single cost. We do not have a, a quick turnaround in the, in the funding from FEMA.
Tom, just a quick follow-up for Jim.
Sure, if you would. Go ahead.
Possible, Jim, we could use the cares fund through the CDVG? The funding that Kristen talked about?
That's a good question. I, I don't think so because I think all that money has some tied to low, low to moderate income. And I don't think we can guarantee everyone going through the facility would be of low to moderate income.
Okay, I thought because it's directly related to the COVID-19 situation, we might be able to tap that money.
I can look into it and have that discussion with Kristen tomorrow.
Yeah, that's a good thought. Yeah, Jim, the other, the other issue on this, have we had any discussions with the risk pool about coverage on, liability coverage on this? It sounds like we're going to end up possibly running a hospital, which is, which I would, if you haven't done it, I would suggest you, you have at least a chat with, with the powers that be there and find out about it. I haven't raised this in anyplace else, but I think that might be something worth just tucking in the back of your mind and maybe having that discussion. Because, you know, we're going to be faced with this. We're the only county actually that's going to be faced with this. And that may be kind of a, kind of a unknown in that, in that thing. But I would certainly, I would certainly not want to get sued for, you know, medical malpractice or something and turn out that we don't have any coverage on that, so.
I, I've, I've addressed that issue with the contract that we will be having with the two hospitals.
Okay.
So that is all on that side and put on, you know, as we are providing a service and we will, in a sense, running a alternative hospital out of our building. Much of the healthcare side of things gets put on the hospitals in their contract.
Yeah, okay, that's, no, that's good. I, I, I figured you were on top of it, but I, just in case. So thank you. Sure, carry on.
The other thing is, I, I just want to let you know, you know, you may not have heard this from me, but, you know, as much as we're hearing other communities and government bodies having potential COVID-infected employees. We have had our fair share of scares, knock on wood. The jail, the sheriff's office, CCRCC, even at the courthouse, we've all had some scares. And at this point, we are okay. We haven't had anyone test positive that I am aware of. Plenty of staff members tested. Gone to the extent of cleaning many offices, even the regional dispatch facility. We cleaned over the weekend. It was a kickoff to their National Telecommunicators Week by cleaning all their offices up there this weekend. But just wanted to relay on that we're not, not immune. We've just been very lucky thus far not to have a testative result come back. And, you know, I knock on wood every single day that that's going to stay the same. So I just wanted to pass that on to the commissioners. Lastly is, we need to talk about signatures because we do have a number of documents that need to have everyone's signatures. As you saw, there were two proclamations this evening. There is the resolution concerning the cross insurance arena. And what's really pushing this conversation is I learned earlier today that the resolution that you acted on on April 1st with regards to the Maine Bond Bank originally thought that the Maine Bond Bank would allow for the minutes of the meeting to be attached to the resolution by the commissioners. We learned, or at least Lisa Tibbetts, our corporation council alerted me this morning that they had contacted her and they are requesting the document that has the signatures of the commissioners on. So we will go through an exercise of a number of documents by back and forth. And I asked the commissioners to sign off on these documents. If you scan them and send them back as soon as you can because we have a quick turnaround on some of these documents that we need.
Would Jim?
Yes.
I don't have the capability with the scan, but if you can have them is already, well, for me in the morning, I have to be in Portland at eight and I'll scoot over.
Okay.
Okay, yep.
Jim, I think somewhere in one of our meetings, we talked about trying to create a policy for electronic signatures of the commissioners.
Yes.
And I mean, if you're going to have to go through this process, let's maybe resurrect that.
That was, that was a discussion I believe we had back in February. And I think COVID beat us. So we just haven't, we haven't got to the point of creating a policy and getting in front of you.
Yeah.
But I thought we already, I had our signatures on file when we had to do the Spirit of America awards. I thought we sent them to Travis and he did them because those were all signed by us, well, but we didn't sign them.
Travis, how many do you have, Travis? Do you have all five?
We have good quality signatures for all five commissioners. But since there was no policy in place, we treated that as a one-time occurrence because we were in a situation where we had to. But we do have all five of your signatures in high-quality digital format.
I think that would be fine to use for like the proclamations and the resolution. I would be a little nervous on using it as a, the Maine Bond Bank resolution because I use, I think they use that kind of as a legal document in their files.
Yeah. I'm happy to, I'm happy to sign it. I actually have my own high-quality digital signature stored in my system, which I can just, you know, if you send it as a PDF, I can Which I can just, you know, if you send it as a PDF, I can put it on there and send it along and it should be fine. Yet to have anybody challenge it as not being my signature. Nobody can, nobody can forge my signature, so. You know, incomprehensible, so.
You're right there.
Okay, Jim, anything, anything further? So you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna send something out to us to sign and get back to you this evening, is that correct?
I'll probably start off you chairman and then I'll I'll hold and I'll get Commissioner Whitonis tomorrow morning. And then I'll send it to the rest of the commissioners.
Okay, I'll I'll keep it, I'll keep an eye on my email over the evening, so we'll, I'll I'll get that right out to you.
Sounds great, thank you.
Okay. Other executive staff, Alex, do you have any any comments? How many, how much money are we losing from the pandemic?
Well, it's a lot. Hey, first off, did we do the consent agenda? Did I just miss it?
Yeah, we did. It was only two things, but they both happened.
I got distracted, obviously. Yeah, so the first couple of weeks of this, my focus was entirely on. Keeping the trains running and keeping things rolling in the short term. As we all adjusted to distancing and everything else. The past week or so, I started to turn my attention to really how we're gonna get through this year and what this looks like. In the coming months, and it makes me want those first few weeks back. Obviously, the meltdown of the economy around here will impact the county. This will have repercussions. A great deal of our money comes from the state of Maine in the form of the money coming for the jail. And then in the fall, money coming from the municipalities. Assuming those monies come in as expected and when expected. That's something that we can work through. But you know, there's a lot of uncertainty out there and a lot of worries about how we're gonna get through this year. We will not be immune from this. So there'll be a lot more to come, but. As you all might guess, my my concerns are many and varied and I'll leave it at that.
Tom, can I have a question to for Alex?
Sure, yes, go ahead.
Maybe Jim on this. So does this put our thoughts of going from a calendar to a fiscal year in jeopardy?
Absolutely does. A lot of communities are out there that are hurting right now, pushing their tax states. Revenues, making their own cuts. Alex and I have talked briefly on it about two weeks ago. But it is something that we will probably be bringing to you over the next thirty to sixty days. To have a larger discussion.
I think another problem with doing that is that would mean that this summer we'd be doing eighteen months worth of budgeting. Now is not the time for us to be looking further out. It's, you know, there's an awful lot of uncertainty out there.
Okay, other other comments or questions for Mr. Kimball? All right. Travis, any anything on the legislative front or governmental front that we need to be concerned about?
I I don't have anything unique to update you on, no.
Okay.
Can I, I got a question.
Go ahead.
Travis broadband and that status and and then the the rumblings that are going through Congress about a infrastructure bill. Are we in any kind of a situation, should it come forth to slap it down so that we can be first in line?
So what what Congress has been funding for broadband infrastructure over the past couple of years. Has not been something that most of Cumberland County qualifies for. Their their requirements even for a loan are that eighty percent of a community. Does not have access to the government permission of broadband and only three towns in Cumberland County. Meet that definition and so in their case. Private industry has approached them about potentially applying for those loans and doing the build out. And paying the loans back through new subscribers. It's not something that Cumberland County would qualify for. If over the course of the next several months, it's revealed that areas like ours have not been capable. For students getting a home with people working remotely. Then in concept, yeah, they might broaden those standards a bit, but every conversation that I've seen about extending deadlines or putting more money has been into the. Those USDA rural development requirements that exist already that we just don't qualify for. We had been working on until a month ago was landing about half a dozen wifi hotspots in communities with. Traditional downtowns, active parks and so on. I think that we're probably going to have to put the brakes on that. Conversations for Jim and Alex to be involved in, it's probably funds that we're going to have to to appropriate somewhere else would be my guess.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Comments from county commissioners. Commissioner Gordon, I'll start with you.
Oh, thank you. Well, it just, it goes back to COVID-19 and and. All the things we're struggling with staying in, I know that people are getting very, very restless. I encourage them to please, please stay at home unless you have to go out for items that are necessary and essential. And then I I ask people to kind of look at the group of people you have in your community that are over seventy. Because those are the ones that are purportedly really at risk and they need assistance shopping. Getting any kinds of hardware, et cetera, and to make sure that those requirements are met or otherwise it'll really be a struggle for them. And then always wash your hands, wash your hands, wash your hands. Clorox, everything that you handle so that you won't get this. The effects of of view the public having done what you've done so far are beginning to show up with. The number of cases are beginning to diminish and for that we can only thank one another. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Commissioner Whitonis?
I got a couple of things. First of all, I would like to thank with Jim and his staff. I know that they've been working twenty-four seven, especially over with the weekend. You know, like with the scare and and I also would like to. Also thank Sheriff Kevin because he has with the jail situation down there and they've done an excellent job. I am on a conference call. It's every Monday and he has his hands full. He's got the jail, he's got. Had the patrol with deputies and I just want to say thank you to all the people in our executive staff and. Our Dawn in the HR, they have really, you know, been at this, you know, for a long time and I just would think that. You know, would they, you know, would need our support and I know that we all. Are giving them our support, but you know, it doesn't hurt, you know, to pick up the phone, you know, maybe like in the afternoon and just say, hey, Jim or. Or Kevin or Alex, oh, how you doing, you know, because there's nobody looking after them. And I think that's our responsibility because, you know, they report to us. I just want to thank them, everybody, and I do appreciate, you know, Steve, your comment on. How the elderly, I have been helping a person out here in Waukesha who is in her eighties. And has our cancer and it's our difficult, you know, because well, they're lonely, so if we can, you know, you know, contact a neighbor or a friend and just see. You know, with how they're doing, so I our hands go out, you know, to always everybody and. Like you said, we have to keep the hands of clean, so that's all I have.
Commissioner Cludier?
Yeah, just just one thing, actually, I was contacted by someone who described themselves as a as a. Concerned with inmates' conditions and that kind of thing, inquiring about. How COVID-19 was being handled at the at the jail and ran ran that by. Jim and he conferred with Kevin and got back to me. I just want maybe for the sake of having everyone know what their. Report was first, there is no infection. Among the inmates or the staff that at least that anybody's aware of, that there are a variety of. Of preventive measures in place. The the six foot rule is not a very easy one to apply in a facility like the jail. One of the things that that is probably fairly important to. Being aware of the safety status is that anyone who comes into the jail is actually quarantined for a period of time to make sure that they're not affected, so. All in all, although it doesn't bear complete resemblance to the CDC model guidelines for all of us. It is in fact a fairly comprehensive safety. System that's in place and seems to be working fine, so I was glad to hear about that. I'll be glad for everybody to know about it. And my my hats off to the sheriff and Jim for. For being aware of that and working working that through. And that's all I have.
Yes, thanks very much. Commissioner Jamison?
Thank you, Tom. I would like to echo the thoughts that Sue raised about. Thanking not just our executive staff members who are doing an extraordinary job, but also all of our employees out there on the line. And exposing themselves, subjecting themselves to, you know, to being infected or being exposed. For the sake of doing their job and and doing it well, so. Kudos to all of our employees and especially executive staff. These are unprecedented times. Stay healthy and be safe and that means stay at home. We are seeing some subtle and and. Good progress, but that will only that will only occur and we will. If we continue to stay the course, we will beat this, but we need to stay the course, so reach out to your neighbors. Particularly elderly's neighbors and relatives and take care of yourselves, but let's be smart and be safe. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Jamison. I'm not gonna go on. Great length of to echo what I what the other commissioners have said. I have endless admiration for our county employees who are really making the county committee, the county continues to work. And we are doing our essential services and we're doing all of that. Sometimes, you know, sometimes you you miss interfacing with folks, but it's all. Necessary at the moment, so we do need to, we do need to stay home. We have the benefit of living in Maine where I think we actually are treating this like adults. Generally speaking, our our government is, our government is taking it seriously. They're putting it. Somebody wants to come and talk to the people of Maine about. You know, about what we need to do in this pandemic, they don't put a politician up there, they put an actual medical professional to talk to us. So I am greatly cheered by the the reaction of of our of our state government. And and of our citizens across the state, because generally speaking, I think we're doing a good job. I think we're seeing the results of it. I know the the local paper puts a. I don't know if they did it today, I didn't get a paper today, but they've been putting the, you know, keeping tally of the available. Available intensive care beds and we aren't at at capacity. So I think we're doing pretty well with being able to provide services for people that need to do it, so that's a that's a tribute to. Tribute to the good sense of Mainers and I'm happy to happy to be a member in that, so. Thank you very much and thanks to all the county folks especially who are out there, but thanks to everybody else up and down the chain, so. I would entertain a motion to to adjourn and we have an executive session session coming up. Oh, sorry, not a motion to adjourn, motion for executive session. I'm getting ahead of myself. Yes. Who would like to make the motion?
Oh, okay.
Susan?
No, I was just gonna say, would do you want to hear anything from our Dawn or the sheriff because they're on?
I suspect we'll hear from the sheriff and Dawn shortly, but if they would like to, if they would, Kevin, if you would like to. Make public comments at this point, I I'm happy to happy to hear from you.
Okay, technology, there we go. Keep it real brief. I know time is a factor. Today we shut down the Community Corrections Center. We've been running at about six. I tried to put most of those folks out on home confinement, but six of them could not go out and I was not gonna risk that, so. They got moved back to the jail. We're at about two hundred and sixty some odd. Inmates, two hundred and fourteen of which are pretrial and the other sixty-one are sentenced. Like Jim says, we've been lucky, we the staff doing a phenomenal job of doing their job, staying safe. We've got about five or six employees. That are self distancing from their family out at St. Joseph's College. Because they feel that they may be at risk with some of the people coming through the jail. So our our biggest struggle is really PPE equipment. Joe Chappelle is doing a great job of getting us stuff, but. You know, we're surgical masks, we're down on surgical masks and one of our plans, if God forbid, we get it into the jail, is to have inmates with surgical masks and. Right now, we've got about. Two rotations worth for all the inmates we have. Dawn Brew has been a phenomenal job of, you know, helping us out with training. And HR related stuff, so we've done the best weekend, I think, listening to Commissioner Cludier. The six feet apart thing was really what we were trying to get to, but we couldn't release enough inmates to do that. But we do have contingency plans if God forbid it gets into the into the death.
Let's hope not.
Thank you, thank you, Sheriff. Dawn, you want to have a public comment at this point?
The only thing that I would say is that, you know, the staff, we've been spending the bulk of our time the last month on COVID related matters, particularly as it impacts our workforce. We've been trying to keep up with the latest CDC model guidance and directives from the governor. And as you know, those things have been changing daily, certainly weekly. We have a lot of case specific. Examples or potential infections from employees that we've been handling case by case. Staff has been doing a great job, but we have had some of our employees who may thought they may have been infected or and resulted that they weren't. But we're tracking them. We have a separate COVID tracking spreadsheet. But we're spending a lot of time on that, working with the staff of all the various departments. One of the things President Trump on March twentieth signed in the Family First Coronavirus Response Act that some of you may be aware of. And excluded from that act, communities could exclude health professionals and emergency responders. And what that did was it allowed for additional paid sick leave, up to eighty hours additional paid sick leave for employees and an additional. Twelve weeks of family medical leave for eligible reasons. In Cumberland County, that really probably only about forty to forty-five of our employees are eligible. For that additional leave under the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, since we could say that. All but about forty to forty-five of our employees fell under the definition of an emergency responder, which helps obviously our staffing. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dawn. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to just say that Dawn and his staff have done a phenomenal job on creating a roadmap. For not only our staff, but there are many documents that his staff has developed on the how tos. Of getting through state and federal regulations around. And how it applies and Dawn has been great in that he's been willing to share those documents with the town managers and HR throughout the county. To save them a bunch of time and create greater efficiencies in every town hall. And Dawn and his staff have done a phenomenal job on that heavy lift. Thank you. And Dawn and his staff have done a phenomenal job on that heavy lift. Thank you, Dawn.
Good. Yes, no. Kudos. All right. Now, are we ready for a motion to go into executive session? Okay, so I want to make a motion. So move, Steve Gordon moves.
I'll second it.
Susan Whitonis seconds. Barbara, if you could take the role on that. Barbara, anytime. Take the role. Sorry. Oh, you're having supper.
Thank you.
There you go.
Commission Chair Thomas Coward?
Yes.
Mission Vice Chair Stephen Gordon?
Yes.
Commissioner Neil Jamison?
Yes.
Commissioner James Cludier? And Commissioner Susan Whitonis?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous. For anyone watching on the YouTube stream, we're going into executive session, which is close to the public. We will not be coming. Jim, are we gonna have any action after this? This is just advisory?
The only action would be German. That's it.
Okay, so the only thing we will be doing after we come out is adjourning the meeting, so I don't think we'll fire up the the public stream, the YouTube stream after after we come out. So so thank you, thank you all very much. If anyone's out there watching besides Travis and me and our mystery person. Catch us at the next meeting. All the information will be up on our website in due course. So thank you very much.